I'm like, we can, sure that we're all proper spacing. And we have individuals in the room. And I'm waiting at seven o'clock right now. So we will call the Mulberry City Council. I recommend we need to order at this time. If everyone would stand, you'll have open prayer. Father in heaven, we do thank you so much for a great day that you've given us today here in Mulberry. We thank you, Lord, for all the protection that you've given us. We thank you for those that are here tonight. We pray, Lord, that you would just bless our country, bless our nation, and pray that you would heal us of this coronavirus that is going all over the world. You know that many families have suffered tremendously in many different places and have lost loved ones and people are still suffering. So we pray that you bring that to an end for us. We trust you, we believe you, and thank you. We pray you give our president, vice president, governor, and those in leadership positions the wisdom to make the right choices, the right decisions, that we can live in peace and harmony and that we can be protected and safe and secure. We thank you for all of those that are putting their lives on the line, our medical teams and our first responders, our law enforcement, our military, all those that have to work to give us safety and security. We pray you keep them safe and bless them. I pray, Lord, as we take care of the business of the city of Mulberry, that you would give us wisdom which one. And I pray you'd bless all of the council members here and those that may not be here tonight. So anyway, Lord, we just thank you and we praise you. It's in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. This time we will have, we'll call Desiree seated down there. So Desiree would you call Ro?
Ro, please.
Yes.
Bobby, please.
Here.
Eva Turner. Stacy Munn.
Here.
And Bill Bruce.
Here.
Jimmy Moore.
Here.
Carlos Sutherland.
Here.
Mayor Bass.
Here. So we do have a call. We have one council member that notified us that could not be here tonight. So she'll be excused. The first order on the agenda after that is approval of the consent agenda. The March meeting and financial statements were all mailed to you. You've had plenty of time to go through those council members. And so are there any additions, corrections, or changes that need to be made to the March minutes or the financial statements that mailed to you?
I'd like to make a comment on the financial statement on those street funds.
Yes.
I know we've had several major repairs and projects. But we're down about $38,000 on that. But we have plenty of that monthly or...
Yes, we anticipate that even out in the year because our expenses were in the first quarter of this year. So therefore, yes, we do anticipate our road, the street fund to continue on. It may be at a reduced level. And we'll talk about that as we go through here on what our projections are as far as funding.
That's what my concern was out there.
Yes. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, changes, additions to the...
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion has been made by Mr. Jim Moore and seconded by Attorney Bruce. As far as that, are there any other discussions or comments before you vote? If not...
Wilma?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
It would be noted that all council members voted yes for approval of those. Next, we go into old business. We have none. In the next order is new business. And this is approval by council to use a building that is located at 606 Church Avenue as the Mulberry District Court and Council Room. We've approved all future council meetings where we held this location, as well as all District Court proceeds. And so we are in this location and Monica has the information about that. Do you want to talk anymore about that?
You want the resolution read or do you want to discuss the building first?
We could discuss it and then at the resolution read and after a motion, we can have more discussion on it.
The purpose of the request is twofold. One, the constraints of our council room presently at the city complex really inhibits the court procedures. The security of the judge is in question. We, it's a little disruptive when we have a large court. It's hard for people to hear and understand. And so the judge has requested that we try to find an alternative for court. And in particular, since we are not having court right now by Supreme Court mandate, it's, our June court is going to be very large. And so we did bring the judge down here to look at this facility, which he was very excited about. There's ingress and egress for him without having to go through the public, which for his safety, the, it's easier for the police department to maintain the security of the building as well as space for the gallery and the defendants and the prosecutors. So we thought if that is acceptable to you, Lord, we would look at moving the council meeting up here also, which would give us more space for the public. Unfortunately, in these times, we don't know what's going to happen going forward for a few months. But in the future then, there's plenty of room for people to be here.
As Monica has mentioned, our district judge came and looked at the facility. He showed to him, he was asking about a larger place than what we currently have. And he would like to be able to move the district court to this facility. And since this facility is not being used at this time and we've not had anyone that's expressed interest in listing this building, and it was designed out as similar like a courtroom would be. And then if the council wants to do that and wants to move the council room here also, then the tables that are currently in our council, they would replace these tables that are temporary here. And so they would fit in here and we would have room for the council to be here. So that is kind of a, about what this building could be utilized for.
The judge has also authorized us to use some of the court automation funds. He is the only one that can appropriate the court automation funds that you see on your balance sheet. He has authorized us to use some of those funds if necessary to purchase some furniture or something else or equipment that we might need to help bring that court into compliance, as well as hire a crew to come in and clean the building from top to bottom.
So we can have a motion taken and we can discuss...
You want me to read the resolution?
Yes.
City of Mulberry, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2020-05. A resolution authorizing the mayor and reporter treasurer to execute documents necessary to manage... I'm in the wrong resolution.
Do we have a resolution for this?
We, I don't have a resolution for this. I apologize, Mayor. That's a, we didn't think that that was necessary because it is just a used building, so.
Okay, Stacy Munn has made the motion that we utilize this building at 606 Church Avenue as the district court rooms and also as the Mulberry City Council chamber. And Kim Bruce seconded. Is there any other questions, discussions? You want to talk about this facility? You want to talk about anything in relationship to that?
Would it need to be much work done on it? Maybe they all did on the furniture in here.
Just maybe moving the furniture in here. They, we have a couple of podiums that could be put here, one or two. I would work out best for the court. So we basically have tables that were donated to us by the county for that. But as far as any major renovations or expenses, we don't anticipate any. But the judge has said that we should use the court automation funds for like things that are associated with getting this facility ready. We already have some different drapes to go back here. Kay had funds, donations, went back there to change it up. And then we'll change a few things up, but...
They would make these steps, getting up there with a handrail.
Right. Whatever we need, make sure that we're ADA compliant and that we have the facility where it can receive, you know, guests. Any other discussion? If not...
Wilma?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Stacy? Cam? Yes. Jimmy?
Yes.
So let me know that all council members voted yes for the utilization of this facility at 606 Church Avenue to be used as the Mulberry District Court and the Mulberry City Council. Next on the new business, we do have, that came in after the agendas without. So we need to talk about this. We have a cell tower company wanted to talk to us about changing a lease on... They have a lease on our property that has a cell tower. And the lease comes up next year. And so they've made some offers. Monica, do you want to go through the options?
Yeah, let me get this raised copy. This MD7, which is a company, it's a company that was hired by American Tower to oversee their leases and so forth that are coming up. Our lease does come up at the beginning of next year, 2021. They stated that to be that they have some upgrades that they need to be doing to the tower and that the cell companies have asked for some reductions in their rents and so forth. This is a proposal that they sent to us for the cell tower, which is located dire east at exit 20 out there, near exit 20. They are proposing a five-year rent agreement of $19,500 at $325 per month beginning August 1st, 2020. The current lease has a 10% escalation clause in it, which would begin in February of 2021. And they are saying that that will continue effective 2022, February 11th, 2021. There's a lot of twos in there. And, or we can take a conditional offer of $72,000 lump sum payment in exchange for a perpetual easement interest, which I do not recommend whatsoever because then you're left with nothing. And it's much better to have that month-to-month lease. Presently, our lease is $500 a month. It is restricted strictly to public safety, particularly the police department. I have informed this company, MD7, of that. And they're supposed to relay that to American Tower, that that is a public safety, being used for public safety strictly. I've spoken with the city attorney and his suggestion is just basically tell them that we don't want to go down on our lease and see what happens. I mean, they can terminate the lease, but the lease comes up next year also for renegotiation. If they decide to terminate the lease, they have to take the tower down and restore the land back to its previous condition. So that's always a thought process.
Is that in the contract?
Yes, it is. It is. There's a couple of options that we could use for negotiation if Mayor wants to go over those, I think.
Well, one thing we feel like that $500 a month is very fair. We do not feel like that should be, we just feel like that, that is really what's fair. And, you know, this is, the lease comes up a year from now. So I think maybe it's a little early for us to really try to start any negotiations with them. We said that, but since it is real property, the council needs to give us some direction on what your desires are. If you want us to, you know, sit back and say, you know, well, you've looked at that. We'd like to just hold off, you know, we think we've got a good lease and, you know, closer to the termination of the time, you know, we could maybe see some difference later on. But right now, we may want to just hold it. If that's your call as a council, what you'd like to do with that?
I think they want to, they want to settle the lease now because they want to do improvements. Is that correct?
That's what they say.
Well, I mean, I would, I would agree on renewing the lease at the $500 a month. You know, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't allow, I wouldn't...
I can't see what the approval would be coming out of our, what we received.
No.
Is that what they're asking?
They have way too much invested to have to take it down.
If I understand this right, we, we have the option of going up 10%?
That is what is in the contract.
Right.
The contract says it's a yearly option of 10% increase, am I right?
Do we have a five-year lease again?
Yes, five-year lease.
Then we have next year.
It'll be up next year. So what direction do you would like to give the mayor in communicating with this company?
I feel like we should address it at a later date.
Okay. Okay. Would someone make a motion that council would instruct the mayor to look at the consent at a later date? Then tell them that we're holding off until later. Motion's made, Mr. Peavy and seconded by Mrs. Muntz. And is there any other discussion?
Wilma?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me know that all council members voted yes. Next, we had that a contact from Edward Jones brought that came to us and said that there had been a donation. A lady had left her will, a donation to the Mulberry Cemetery. And for us to secure those funds, we have to do a resolution authorizing the mayor to make an account with the Edward Jones. And then for that money to be transferred over to us, then we would liquidate that and put it in our cemetery fund. And that is this resolution 2020-05. Monica, would you read that resolution 2020-05?
I will now, yes, sir. City of Mulberry, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2020-05. A resolution authorizing the mayor and reporter treasurer to execute documents necessary to manage funds benefiting the city cemetery held by Edward Jones, whereas the city of Mulberry owns and operates a municipal cemetery. Whereas the cemetery is the beneficiary of an estate with funds held at Edward Jones. Whereas Edward Jones requires certain forms to be executed and approved in order to manage the said funds. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Mulberry, Arkansas, as follows. Section 1, the Mulberry City Council authorizes the mayor and reporter treasurer to execute the necessary documents and forms as required by Edward Jones to access, disperse, and otherwise manage funds held by Edward Jones for the benefit of the city cemetery. To the extent that Edward Jones will require a specific form or forms for its records, the resolution form provided by Edward Jones is hereby approved and adopted and attached as an Exhibit A and may be executed and deemed necessary by the city's officials. All municipal accounts must have two signatures for dispersment. Any two of the following shall be authorized signers for dispersment of funds from the funds accounts at Edward Jones. Mayor Harry V. Baxter, reporter treasurer Carlos Sutherland, Alderman Jimmy Moore. Section 4, the mayor and reporter treasurer are hereby authorized to take any further actions deemed necessary and reasonable to carry out the intent and purposes of this resolution.
There, motion is approved. Motion has been made, Mr. Muntz and seconded by Mr. Tree. And is there any other discussion on this type of, what this is called? If you want to extend?
Wilma?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
Bobby?
Jimmy?
Yeah.
I did.
Okay. That'd be all that all council members voted yes. Next, we'll go into the mayor's report and I ask Monica to bring us up to date on our financial, where we are, the quarter. I don't have that, but what we anticipate as far as the shortfalls that they have according to this COVID-19 coronavirus. And Monica, would you explain that?
I will, yes, sir. So our general fund income, and actually you've already commented on the street income sum, Councilman Moore, is down approximately 11% as compared to the first quarter of last year. As you know, there hasn't been any court proceeding since February and won't be until June. So we've had no, very little court income coming in when people pay their fines or something. We still have some, it's just nothing through the courts. The legislature recently in their fiscal meetings or session cut the state turnbacks by 15% beginning with the new fiscal year of July 1. So that formula that they're using is kind of complicated. We're not real sure. We've asked Representative Lee Johnson to give us a little bit more directive on that. He's still waiting on the budget department to get back with him to understand how this formula is going to work because it's kind of broken down into categories. And we could possibly see as much as 90% total of our turnbacks coming to us instead of 85. But in the end, it's a little uncertain until then. We don't really have a feel yet for sales tax because, of course, March sales tax, we really don't get those until the 1st of May because they're, they're collected in March, sent to the state in April, and then sent to us the end of, the end of the month and the 1st of May. So we're not quite sure how sales tax is going to be affected yet. We do, this is a case where we're lucky that our city itself is not dependent on retail. Most of our businesses are considered essential businesses, gas stations, the Dollar General, that sort of thing. So we're hoping that that, our city sales tax is not affected too much. Where we're going to see a big sales tax hit is probably on the county sales tax, where it comes into our general fund and our streets because the county is where a lot of that retail shows up. I'm, you know, 100% sure they'll be down, just don't know how much yet. So we'll just kind of watch that and see. We probably will be back in July with some amended budgets to look at. Just going to kind of watch things for the time being. We have, every department is tightening up, watching their spending in anticipation of shortfalls. We'll certainly keep you informed on any changes that there might be. Anytime that you have questions about the finances, do not hesitate to ask me. If you want a particular report, let me know. I can probably come up with it for you. If you want to see a middle of the month of where we stand, like the reports you get on a monthly basis, I can pull that for any point in time. And with that being said, I do want to say that if you have questions, if people come to you with questions, and you don't understand how to explain it or what's going on, please ask, tell them to ask us. I'm happy to talk with anyone. And I know that there's been a published, our end-of-the-year annual financial statement that we published by April 1st. It was published around March 1st of this year. It was recently put out on social media with some comments that were misstated. That, that specifically it showed the cemetery fund as $3,000. And the comment was, we started at $30,000 and that money's gone. That's not the case. That was the receipt for 2000. He was looking at the receipts column for 2019. So that's the amount of income we had in that account for that year. And that end-of-the-year financial statement is a balance sheet of all accounts totaled together as far as their beginning balances and their ending balances. And it shows the receipts and the expenses for the whole year. So, you know, you might want to pull back out your end-of-the-year financial statement for 2019. You would have approved that, I believe it was the March meeting maybe that you, or February meeting that you approved that. And I'll give you a new copy if you want it to take a look at that in case you have, in case anybody questions anything on that for you. But we have not spent all the $30,000 plus in the cemetery association. I think you've got balance sheets that show you that for this month. But, you know, it is tight. It's not just us. It's across the state, it's across the nation. We all know that. It's trying times that we don't know where we're going. And we're all trying to figure it out together. We it's trying times that we don't know where we're going, and we're all trying to figure it out together. With that, can I answer any questions for anyone? Or have I covered your questions?
I think what it is, kind of boils down to, we'd like to get through the second quarter, see how it is. We feel like we're in good shape going into this and then come back to you. And if we need to make any adjustments in the budget for the remainder of the year, let's do that mid-year and after the second quarter and see if we need to adjust the budget, how we need to adjust the budget to take us through the year. And this year brought out, I kind of want to reiterate, if you see things on social media about this, you know, most of the time it's inaccurate, and so don't trust what you see out there. But make sure that you contact the office and make sure to contact Monica because of any of our financial data.
And I think that there's been a little bit of technical difficulty. We weren't able to get this on Facebook Live. For some reason, the mobile devices are not allowing us to put for the way the city's page is through Facebook. It was not letting me get on Facebook Live. I hope everyone found the YouTube setup. I know we've got a couple of people subscribed in, so I apologize. It's, you know, technology. We work with what we've got, and that's what we had this time.
And we talked with our attorneys at the Municipal League on making sure that everything that we're doing here tonight meets all the FOIA requirements, meets all of the legal requirements of having a meeting. So we covered that. If there any other thing on the financial aspect of that?
I don't I don't think that our county taxes are going to be that hard unless you had a lot of restaurant business, which I don't think we really do in the county, but I know retail is booming right now.
Right.
Hopefully.
That's kind of the next thing that I was talking about is we still have our citywide cleanup program for the first Saturday in May. And as you know, right now, you can go to Walmart, you can go to, you know, Lowe's, Home Depot and all that, and they're almost packed out with people. And hopefully more people will start wearing masks when they're out. I know that, Cam, we always put on a mask when we go out and we encourage people to that. And so for citywide cleanup, people will be wearing gloves, they'll be with masks, they'll be doing social. This is the way we have it designed, where people just come through, offload and go out. And so certainly not putting anyone in danger with the cleanup. We, the reason that the food pantry is not open and operating right now is because with the coronavirus, the people that would operate that have to be trained by the food bank. And so you can't do the training right now. And so until we get the training done, we can't really operate the food pantry to the full extent. Now, if there's things that come in from time to time, we'll be able to distribute those and get those out. And so we'll, the council will realize, you know, that it's all ready to go as soon as people are trained, and that will be operating soon.
Have we had the inspection on that yet?
The. The which inspection are you talking about?
I know that the.
No, no, it has not been. No. We won't do that until we have the people trained. But we've gone through all the proper procedures with the fire marshal, with the city that it's been sprayed with the proper insecticides to be sprayed. And so the process, the procedures lead up to getting it fully inspected and approved. We're looking out for that. Okay, is there anything else, Monica, that I have missed or missed?
Would you like to mention about cemetery decoration?
Cemetery decorations normally scheduled for the.
Third.
Sunday in May. And not knowing about how it's going to be, what phase Arkansas is going to be in, we feel like it's probably best just to cancel that for this year if no one has objection against it.
You're talking about the meeting that we always have out there.
That's the cemetery, yes.
They'll still decorate.
Oh, yes, most definitely.
Yes.
Yes, we definitely want people to.
Right.
To do that, to decorate, but just not add the official gathering of people gathering together. Let's go around the room. We've got a night phone over here, too, if you want to hit that.
Mr. Green, can you ever run to here? Anybody else?
Recycling, will they start once we get through our phases? When do you think we'll start the pickup on recycling here inside of all the.
We don't have a date, and we will do the first side of the pickup. But we are doing our recycling.
Yes.
At the, yes, we can bring out anything to the recycling center if that is open. And the workers, they have the proper equipment, the personal equipment to make it safe for anyone that wants to drop off anything at the recycling center.
Still Friday and Saturday?
Still Friday from nine until four on Saturday, nine until two.
Just how much authority do we have as far as this opening? Do we call any shots on it as far as you, the council?
On the.
Our city.
Our city, we're just following the directions that they provided through the state.
So whatever they say that will, that's what we'll do.
That's, let's, someone asked at the district, we're just looking at the guidelines that are given to us by the state. And the county judge and all of the mayors in Crawford County have written a letter and mailed it to our elected representatives, to our senators, to our congressmen, and to our governor, and to the governor, to our state senators, state rep, that we will make sure that they know our concerns about the cities and about the shortfalls that cities may have and make sure that any funding that goes through that could be designated for cities that we could be part of that. Motion to adjourn?
I hope you do that, Karen.
Motion's been made by, yeah, in second, most of the late second, that we adjourned. All the way. Mulberry City Council, adjourned.
Is everybody here all right tonight? Did you hear?